This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30 this way to start the meeting. Real call, please.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Commissioner Stover?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Yep.
Mr. Tweedy?
Here.
Here, more.
Here. You want to participate in the opening prayer and please, please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the wonderful day that you've given us. We're thankful that we can be about your business here. I pray that you bless commissioners and mayor here for their service to this city. I pray that you be with our city manager, you be with all of our departments. We thank you for those that you've given. Thankful for our first responders. Pray that you bless them and keep them safe. And we're also very thankful for our citizens who make the ultimate decision on who to place here. Pray that you bless them in their work, bless them in the efforts that they make and the things that they try to do to make the city better, keep them safe. And I just pray that everything we do would, this evening, would bring glory to you and would further the betterment of the city. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag as the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any addition or relation to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we'd like to add in addition, under new business, city manager department, item number four, a resolution authorizing the city of our city to approve a bid submitted by New Windows for America to install vinyl siding, new guttering, new windows, build new wood steps, ramps, handrails, and secure electrical at 114 West Kansas Avenue for an amount not to exceed $27,400.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
May we amend the agenda as written?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All favor say aye. Motion carries. I have motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Yes, but move second. Any discussions on that? If not, all favor say aye. Motion carries. A words proclamation. We have a Cinco de Mayo Day in our Kansas City and I'm going to have Charles give the honor to read that since she started. That was one of the forefathers of Taco Wala, so. So, Charles.
Is there any way to come down in front of the podium?
I never know which way you're starting.
The proclamation reads, whereas every year the date of May 5th is observed to commemorate the Mexican-American, Mexican Army's unlikely victory over defense forces in the Battle of Pueblo on May 5th, 1952. Whereas originating in the 1860s with the American, Mexican-American communities in the American West, Southwest, and Northwest, the American Cinco de Mayo holiday began as a way to commemorate the cause of freedom and democracy during the first years of the Civil War. Whereas today in the United States, Cinco de Mayo is observed annually on May 5th as a celebration of Mexican heritage and pride. Whereas Cinco de Mayo celebrations in the United States have taken on a significance beyond that in Mexico, including the displaying of banners, events highlighting Mexican culture, music, and regional dancing, as well as school districts honoring special students about its historical significance. Whereas, you know, our Kansas City Equal Opportunity and Accessibility Advisory Board, in cooperation with 102 The River, our Kansas City Beautification Tree Advisory Board, the Northwest Community Center Advisory Board, Visit Arc City, and other sponsors will host the annual Taco Wala Festival Saturday, May 4th, 2024, at Wilson Park. Dancing, food, games, music, and more for Mexico and several other Latin community.
Latino community.
Now, therefore, the mayor of Arc City, Kansas, thus hereby proclaim May 5th, 2024, a Cinco de Mayo Day, our Kansas City, and encourage all citizens of our Kansas City to observe Cinco de Mayo or participating in the second annual Taco Wala Festival, that's numbered off.
Yes, obvious.
It's, it's. But we'll, we'll correct that.
You bet.
And, and other appropriate ceremonies and activities. And this is signed by the mayor. I'm going to present this to Tammy Henderson. She's the chair of the Taco Wala Board. On my, on my rights, Kelly Gilmore was 102 The River, Jill Hunter was visit Arc City, Sarah Long on the Taco Wala beautification board, and Debbie Savala.
Entertainment with Taco Wala.
Who makes this festival the eventy that is because of all the dancers and music she brings in. Thank you all for your help.
I want to say a few words. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the hard work to do that Taco Wala, you know, all the hard work you guys did. It is a wonderful venue. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I would like to mention VJ Wilkins is the presenting sponsor. We do have several sponsors that helped, but they really stepped up and helped us to get things that the dancers need and some of the equipment we did. So I did want to point out, VJ Wilkins really helps us out with this.
Thank you all. Thank you. We have another proclamation proclaim National Foster Care Month in our Kansas City. I don't think we have anybody here, so I'll just read it from my podium. Whereas May is a National Foster Care Month, a month set aside to acknowledgement foster parents, family members, volunteers, mentors, policymakers, child welfare professionals, and other members of the community who help children and youth in foster care to find permanent homes and connection. And whereas during a National Foster Care Month, the city of our Kansas City renews its commitment to ensuring a bright future for more than 400,000 children and youth in foster care and celebrates all those who make a meaningful difference in their lives. And whereas foster families are unsung heroes who serve as a primary source of love, protection, and support to the children and youth in the foster care system in Cali County. And whereas there are numerous individuals in public and private organizations who work tirelessly to increase public awareness of the needs of the children, foster care, as well as enduring the valuable contribution of foster parents, recognizing the foster care system is only as good as those who choose to be a part of it. Now, therefore, the mayor of our Kansas City, Kansas, calls upon all citizens of the city to observe the month of May 20, of May 24th as National Foster Care Month. In our Kansas City, it encourages all citizens in the city of our Kansas City to consider extending their family to include fostering, fostering some of our most valuable children. So that's that proclamation. Our next proclamation is public service recognition. Whereas celebrated in May of 1985, Public Service Recognition Week is a time to set aside to honor the folks who serve our nation. And whereas Americans who serve every single day by public servants at the federal, state, and county and city levels, and these essential workers, unsung heroes, keep our nation functioning. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. And whereas many servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in the service to the people of our, to the people of the United States around the world. And whereas these public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, train conductors, astronauts, nurses, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless of other occupation that the day in and day out provides a diverse service demanded by the American people of their government with both efficiency and integrity. And whereas with these dedicated public servants at every level continually will be impossible a representative on democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, the mayor of our Kansas City does hereby proclaim the week of May 5 through 11, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week. In our Kansas City, Kansas, encourages all citizens to recognize the confidence and contribution of government employees at all levels, federal, state, and county, and city. Third, we have recognition of visitors. We have Leonard Hernandez to come and talk about our hospital. Give Scott on that day. What's going on?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come this evening and visit with you. I got to tell you a couple of things before I get started. First, I want to introduce my wife, Kelly. I know what you think. We've been married 45 years. I know what you think. How is he so young? The reality is, we've been together a long time. And we've been all across Kansas for the last 30 years, working in hospitals. And I had the opportunity to come here a few years ago, and it didn't work out, but I'm glad to be here this time. The last time I was here, it went back to Elkhart, and the board offered me a, a deal I couldn't refuse. And so I kind of missed out on the opportunity at that time. But over the years, I've always thought about this place. And I wondered, could I have made a difference? Could I have done a little bit more had I come? And I'm, I'm really excited about being here. And we look forward to moving to Arc City and becoming part of the community. We do have a house for sale, so if you didn't know, if anybody is wanting to move to El Dorado, I have a nice house for sale. But we look forward to getting that done soon. So I got to tell you that when they asked me, kind of like, I started thinking about, well, gosh, how many directions can I go with this conversation? Because you know that the hospital here, since about five months ago, six months ago, it underwent a huge transition. It gave up inpatient services. It modified the way the hospital's being used, modified the way people thought of the hospital. But I'm here to tell you and to hopefully convince you and anybody that's listening or watching that we are a full-service hospital. We can take care of whatever needs that you need to. Now, we may have to take you as an inpatient to another facility, but we're here to take care of you, to get you to that point. And I think that's a very important thing that people need to understand about this rural emergency hospital is we truly are a hospital. We're not a piece of a hospital or anything like that. We are a full-service hospital. So I hope everybody does understand that. I also want to say to the city council that we appreciate the aggressiveness that you have used over the years to lower the bond in the debt that you guys have worked on over the years. I know you've made significant difference this year, and I just want you to know it doesn't go unnoticed by me and the staff. We do really appreciate those efforts. So thank you for doing that. And we'll do our best to be better stewards of the finances and stuff so that we can make that place really what it should be. I do also want to thank you for the three new board members. Since I came, I think that we are very fortunate to have people that are still willing to stand up with the hospital and represent the hospital in the community. And we're excited. Well, I think our next board meeting will be our first full board meeting with everybody there. And so we're excited about that. Thank you for, thank you for doing that and making sure that we have a full board. I want to start by talking a little bit about finance. And I'm not going to go into a lot of depth tonight, but I just kind of want you to know where we are. So in 2022, the hospital lost $5.6 million. In 2023, the hospital lost $1.5 million. And in December alone, the hospital lost $472,000. So that was the need that they looked at when they thought about become a rural emergency hospital. What can we do? And so the answer was to give up inpatient services as we know it. But in turn, for giving that up, the, they pay us about $300,000 a month to not provide that service. Now, we gave up $10 million worth of inpatient services. And the $300,000 doesn't seem like it's a lot of money. Over, over the year, it's about a little over $3 million. And with the write-offs, the things that happened with the insurance companies and inpatient service, we were, were actually better off ahead, not billing, not staffing, not doing all those, lowering our doctors down a little bit more by doing those things and not making this hospital a REH. So we're excited about the change. It's been different. We have spent probably the last month really looking at a space that we have now that was created when the hospital gave up admissions and those kinds of things. There was a huge space in between the back part of the hospital that we use and the front part. And I think we're now to the point where we feel like we need to bring that, all those back services in the back to the forefront. So we look like a more viable entity as people come in and out of the hospital. So that's one of the things that we are going to be working on. We're working with the foundation, and it won't be any funding from the hospital board or the hospital. The foundation has agreed to help us raise some money to make those things happen. They're well on the way to making that happen. And so I think you'll probably be hearing about those changes over the next few months. So if you see something going on there, you know, that's, that's what's happening. Remove those services to the front, become more visible to the public. And we're looking at bringing the registration person back to the front, because right now, it's kind of dead in that dead space. And we need to get something there that people understand where to go in the hospital and where they need to be, where their services are. So I mentioned that we lost $1.5 million last year. But in so far, all I have finalized is the January financials. Before January, we actually showed a positive profit of $29,431. In December, we lost $400,000. So we feel like we're starting to put the things in place that will get us to a bottom line by the end of this year. That's obviously our goal. And I think that's one of the reasons I'm here, to help you do that. And I really look forward to work with everybody to make that happen. So one of the things that challenges that we face with this new designation is the fact that we can only keep a patient here 24 hours. Now, that's a kind of a misnomer, because actually, it's a 24-hour average. So most of our patients that are outpatient are only here an hour or two. So when they come in, they get 24 hours. So if they only use two hours, we have to bank, we have to track, and we have to bank those other 22 hours. And so then if a patient comes in, like we just had one, oh, a couple of weeks ago, had to stay a week because there was no place for him to go. There wasn't any place for him to transfer to. So they actually stayed in our hospital for a week. And so I just want you and the community to understand, we have that capability, and we can still do that. We just can't do it for everybody all, all the time. But the reality is, as we bank those hours, we literally, over the year, will probably have to wind up with hundreds of hours available if somebody needs it. So I want everybody that's watching, listening, to understand that, that's what I said earlier. I told you, we're still a hospital, and we still do the things that people need us to do. The doctors are still there. Everything's, everything's a place. We can take care of you, and we will take care of you. And if you ever have a, go there, you have an issue, I think everybody down has my cell phone number now. But I, but that's, but that's my choice, because I do think I have to be available to the community and be able to answer questions and be available for them to understand. So when I looked at, when we looked at our average, you know, I said we could have 24 hours. Our average for the last two or three months has been nine hours. So, and that's all-inclusive, all kinds of patients that we do. And that even includes one that was here 218 hours. So I just want you to understand that we have the capability to take care of it, and we want to do. I wanted to share that with you. Also, I guess I would want to tell you that one of the main focuses is finance, in operations and in collections. And we have about an $8 million accounts receivable. But unfortunately, about 4.1 million of that is past 365 days, which likelihood of collecting, collecting that money is not very good. And if you do get some collection off that, usually between 5% and 10%. So the real focus has to be on the front side of it and, and making sure that we're doing everything that we can. We're going to continue to try to collect the other part. Our main focus has to be to the front, because that's where the money is, and that's what we need to do for everybody here. So I just want you to be aware that that also is a focus, that, you know, being able to collect, produce, and collect, those are, those are the kinds of things that we like to do, and we have to do. The other thing we track is cash, obviously, because, you know, we don't have an abundance of cash anymore. You know, during COVID, hospitals were pushed out a lot of money in the early part of COVID, and gave hospitals a false sense of security. And now that that, now that money is gone, everybody's returning to the idea that we got to make this thing work to keep the doors open. And so I think that's kind of where we are right now. So we track it every day. We track cash every day. And we make sure, we've, we've been here since middle of January, and Shannon, our CFO, has also been here about that same time. And working with Shannon and the rest of the crew, we have, we've whittled our accounts receivable, our accounts payable down to about 2.4 million to about 1.6. So we've been able to make a pretty good dent in that. And our goal, obviously, is to get to net third, net third. I mean, that's real, really a goal. And we got to get there. And that gives everybody comfort as far as being able to understand that the hospital's going to be here long term. And that's what I do. That's, I think that's why they brought me here. I also want to, I want to tell you that, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about the, the project that I mentioned earlier. What we're planning on doing is moving observation and critical care to the front, to the, to the middle, and maybe potentially lease that backspace at some time to another entity that may be better utilized there. But I hope that, that we can build something here that everybody will be proud of. That's, that's why I came. And with that, does anybody have any questions or comments?
You might tell them about our doctor recruitment, what you've been doing.
We do have a new doctor. He's starting in September, I think. Her name is Dr. Corbin. In fact, I just spoke to her today. And she's excited about coming. I think she may even come a little early and works in ER and do some stuff like that. We also continue to recruit mid-levels and physician. We, in rural hospitals in rural America, we never stop recruiting doctors because they come and go time to time. There's a lot of reasons that, I've seen some crazy reasons over the years. I remember, I won't say where, but there was a hospital that lost a doctor because they didn't have a Brahms in a small town community. The white never came, used to not having Brahms. And so they actually left for that reason. They're very, they're very picky about, you know, where they really want to do. You know, we, we're very excited about the, the way things have gone the last few months. I, I go around the hospital and I listen to people. I hear them laugh. I hear them talking. And I hear them kind of excited about being a part of the hospital. That's what it's all about to me. You know, I, I enjoy hospitals. I've been in hospitals for over 30 years. Nothing makes me prouder. And in fact, the other day, I was in my office and I heard a bunch of people, house people, heard some different people going down the hallway, and they were just tickled about something. I walked out and said, why are you guys laughing at? She had to see this lady that came, she was dressed. And I said, well, you mean she was dressed kind of like me? Because, you know, print shirt on that day. So I got to be careful what I wear there, I guess. It might make a comment or two. So anyway, they, they seemed to be having a good time. And I certainly would stand for any question.
Do the specialists that come down into the physician's pavilion, do they affect your total hours?
No, they don't.
They're separate from that?
Because most of them don't admit patients anymore.
Okay, they're just, they're just there for.
Yeah.
Examinations and stuff. Okay. Appreciate you going over the 24-hour, because we hear that all the time.
I got to go there because they're going to kick me out. Yeah, no, if they do, I'll probably hear about it. You know, I, I think that's kind of a misnomer. I will tell you this. When we started, we were the first one, the first one in Kansas. And there are three now. There are four more applications states already, just in Kansas. You know, we were kind of the pioneer state for critical access hospitals. And in the old days, it was called a rural primary care hospital. But, you know, after critical access took off and people started understanding it, it became 100, over 100 of them in Kansas alone. I think we're going to see that same kind of trend in hospital, hospitals, small town America. Not everybody can be everything, you know. And I think the sooner as hospitals realize that, I think the better off everybody will be, will understand what role we can actually play in this community.
Leonard, you might talk about briefly on our billings. Though we've had some problems with our billings and people got, you know, not overbill, but, you know, they get the same bill over and over and stuff, you know, they, you know, so.
I would say, Jay, in, in looking at that, we have created, and we haven't actually met yet, but we've really prepped for this meeting, an executive finance committee. And that committee will meet before each board meeting to get the finance and make sure that everybody's on the same page as we talk about finance in the board meeting. Because when we talk at a board meeting and gets to the community, we want the facts out there. And just kind of like what I was saying earlier, you know, if you look at our, if you look at our AR and said, we got $8 million AR, you know, we should be doing okay. Well, when $4 million of that, you're probably not ever going to collect, you know, much of that. We have to assume the responsibility of what we can do. And so this committee will be in charge of, of getting that together. And, and the board's really never played a role or had a role in a, in a committee like that before. But it has worked in other places I've been. And I think it's important for the board to really understand the finance before we go to a board meeting. Because if you meet once a month, and you meet for a couple of hours, you don't have near the focus on finance that you need. And, and we intend to give them that focus. And we intend to get everyone that noticed that we're aware of the finance at the hospital.
Yeah, the most important thing is, on the finances, the right numbers. I mean, we got, those numbers got to be right. If they're not, we're going to make a bad judgment, you know. And we, I've seen that in the past, you know. And you just, the finances got to be right.
They got to be right, and they got to be, they got to be factual.
Yeah, exactly right.
Because too many times, you can see places that, you know, put out numbers that probably weren't the right way. And it makes, it makes the hospital look one way that it's really not. And I'm not just talking about this, I'm talking about hospitals all over. But I think if you're honest, and you're honest with the people you work with and the people that you serve in the community, groups like this, then if there is a time of need, they understand that you're not just have, you know, this didn't happen, and all of a sudden, you lost $10 million. I, I just think accountability is everything. And I'm probably too, I'm probably too open to a lot, a lot of things. I think we have 150 employees that, you know, share the responsibility of making that happen. Yeah, I know where we are. Now we're doing. That's one thing that I really do stress is. That's one thing that I really do stress is everybody should know the operation and will understand. And the story's the same, no matter where I go, I don't change the story. So, if you ever miss one of my meetings and feel like you need to go to the next one, it's okay. You're going to hear the same thing, you know.
Yeah, it's hard to the billing. I know my mom, she has Medicare across and they were billing me for like 1,500 and it didn't make sense to me. But one of them hadn't paid yet and it took months. I mean, it was three months probably. And they didn't make me pay it, but I'm one, I pay my bills a little time and I'm freaking out because I got this outstanding bill and I don't want to pay it. But you guys were not at fault. It was waiting on the insurance company to pay their share. So, that part of it's rather confusing.
It is, but again, we have that duty to make sure that we're on top of the, sorry.
That'll get easier as time goes.
It'll get easier. It actually will. But you gotta be on top of it.
Well, I think we're bringing more stuff in home, but we have some outsourcing, you know, that's been in that thing. That's been some of the problems that Leonard brought up to us.
That's what they said.
Yeah, our board meeting, but we're trying to bring it in-house where we won't have that confusion. That's why Bruce brought it up, you know, the billing is not.
That's good to hear because I pay really close attention to that stuff and some people don't. I went and got medicine the other day and it was 200, usually 100. And it was just a clerical error, but, you know, some people don't pay attention. And especially when it affects elderly, it bothers me because a lot of times they won't catch it, you know, and that's not their fault. But anyhow, I'm glad to hear that's being addressed.
Thank you. And there is one other number I wanted to tell you from January. In January of last year, the total revenue for the month was 6,390,000. And this year, without inpatient, our revenue was 5,900,000. So, that's, and that was without the REH payment. Put that 300,000 in there, it's actually a little bit more than what the revenue was last year. Well, that's good.
We're going in the right direction.
We're going in the right, we're going in the right direction, but I just want you to know that we are a hospital. We're not less of a hospital. We're just a different hospital.
And the hospital knows that we owe the city a million dollars and we're initially going to work, you know, but we gotta get profitable. We have to take, you know, get there first. But we know we got a debt we gotta pay off down the road. Anybody else have any other questions? Well, thank you, Leonard, for what you do. And thank you for coming. We're probably, we're going to have you come every couple of months.
I was just going to say that, you know.
Just kind of feel the same, you know.
Dana, be glad to give it to you.
Sure.
Unless you got bad news instead of one.
That'll be the month I don't go, that'll be. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Leonard, thank you for what you do.
Nice to see you. Nice to meet you. I mentioned the banquet.
Consent agenda. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Basically, this consent agenda is just approved on April 2nd. The regular meeting minutes is written. Any other discussion? All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. New business.
City Mayor's Department, item number one is an ordinance approving the form of and authorizing execution of an interlocal cooperation agreement respecting an acquisition at Strathairfield Airport Industrial Park and the financing thereof.
So, it's pretty straightforward. Strathairfield is purchasing some property. And since Winfield and our city share the ownership and Strathairfield can't go into debt, Winfield is taking the lead in selling the bonds for that purchase of property. And so what we need to do is do an interlocal agreement, which basically says that Strathairfield isn't able to pay the cost of bonds that Winfield and our city will pay those bonds. So, pretty standard things that we've done in the past with, when we borrow money to buy property, buildings, that type of thing, so.
Does anybody have any questions on that?
It's pretty straightforward, I think. It's north of Strathairfield.
The family had that, had that came to Strathairfield because they were going to sell that property. And that's just extension of the airport, you know, if we were getting more industry in there and stuff. And it's a pretty valuable piece of property for.
I would say strategically placed for growth in the future and it was those deals that it was for sale and you don't know when it's going to come up again, so.
You've got an old railroad line that goes through there, which could be made out of road real easy and stuff to get there. So, there's a lot of plus about that piece of property. So, that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve the form and authorize the execution of interlocal cooperation agreement respecting land acquisitions at Strathairfield Airport Industrial Park and financing thereof.
Second.
It's been moved second. Is there any other discussion on it? Okay, if not, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes. Motion carries. Number two.
An ordinance adopting the budgeted plan to become effective April 2024.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I have three things I would like to visit with you about regarding our pay ordinance. And as you know, our pay ordinance is the overarching document from which we compensate all employees. First thing we would like to do is we would like to add a stormwater maintenance worker, too. This is going to be a position, it is a proposed position that would fall underneath our Public Services Department, which is Tony Tapia. And then we have our Street Stormwater Division supervisor is Brian Edwards and he's here tonight. So, if you have any questions about the position, this position would report directly to Brian. And it would be the primary maintenance worker to oversee our stormwater systems within the city. And as I'm sure you can tell us, Commissioner Beeson, one person is not enough for all that. But it's a start. It's a start. And so we would like to see if we could get that approved tonight so that we could work on posting that position for application tomorrow.
I have a question. Can that be somebody that's already working for the city can apply for it?
Absolutely. The requirements for that position, of course, are you have to have a high school diploma or equivalent. You have to have a good driving record and you need to have a Class B CDL because you're going to have to operate some heavy equipment. But we love to have internal candidates, give people opportunities for promotions because this is an actual two-position. It's not a one, so, yes. Do you know anybody inside outsides part of the word?
And I might add, part of, this was part of the plan we went through with, when we did stormwater rate adjustments a while back. And not only to provide extra funding for the infrastructure, but also to add some help that we could focus more on infrastructure, stormwater as well.
It'll be everything from cleaning out the trash to the erosion, to storm events, to regular maintenance, operating equipment. So, it's, I know the guys in the street have worked on that.
Say, I think we did all of it.
It's never to try and put somebody on it. And then, as we go forward, we want to add a new category of employee. You know, as you work through things, things come to light and you better understand what you're facing, what you're doing, what you have. Currently, we have some positions in our fire EMS department that are part-time positions. Part-time paramedic, part-time AEMT, part-time EMT. All these positions that we need to be able to pull in to cover openings. Many, many of them do work for Winfield Fire EMS, so their qualifications are there. But we've got them classified as part-time, as we do one police officer. Don Mers does part-time work for us. But none of them are truly part-time because they don't have regular part-time schedules. They are truly as needed. So, we've all heard the term in medical, we just follow medical here, PRN, pro re nata, which is a Latin term for as needed or as the situation needs. So, in that, we thought, yeah, PRN suits them better, even though it's seemingly a medical term, it fits. And our fire EMS department, of course, provides medical care. So, with being PRN, the good thing about that is we understand without having a regular part-time schedule that they can not work maybe for quite some time. But then in a situation when we need them, we can still call upon them. So, we would like to add that PRN category, which would require the changing of the job titles on the pay ordinance. So, that's why we bring that to you. The third and final thing that we wanted to discuss is increasing max on the pay ordinance. If you have a pay ordinance in front of you, you will see that every position shows minimum, mid, and max. Min, mid, max. We move those ranges. We shift them to the right anytime we have a cost of living adjustment, okay? If we don't have a COLA or when we have the dollar and the 50 cents thing, we move the ranges for some of it because we didn't want to inflate them, okay? But what happens is we didn't have a COLA for 2024. That being said, we have some employees, and those are generally going to be long-term employees, who would not be eligible for a performance-based merit increase. All of our merit increases or raises throughout the year for employees are based upon their performance. There's a performance evaluation conducted. The scores on that evaluation directly correlate to the amount of the potential merit increase that they could receive. And so because we have not shifted it in a while, we are proposing that we shift only the maximum so that those people would be eligible. Not suggesting shifting the minimum at this very time. But I could tell you that is something I would love to do in the near future for employees and for recruiting purposes. So, really, all this does is allow that opportunity for performance-based merit increases.
So, when would that start?
I would put it effective April the 20th, when this, when the change of this goes into effect.
Have we built that in our budget for that or?
Yeah, it's not a great amount of people and it's not a great amount of dollars. And it all depends on what their evaluation score is.
I don't, you don't have to get, I don't want an exact number. You got to estimate how many people have been here more than 15 years?
Oh, my goodness. And that's most of the people that this affects. Oh, my goodness. I'm going to say this affects about maybe six, seven people that have been here that long. So, I, can we talk about looking at the wages?
Yeah, no, I think I might be just trying to bring it up.
Okay, I don't want to take too much of your time, y'all. But the city of Winfield did a wage study. It was a very in-depth wage study. It was done by the Arnold Group. The Arnold Group is known as a temporary staffing agency. They are much, much more than that. Their Wichita office, they have a gentleman in there. His name is Phil Hayes. He's former military and he can do things with Excel like I've never seen. And he has been in the HR field for a long time. They are thrilled with the product that they have received. I don't know if any of you have spoken with them. They are trying to implement some of the suggested changes, but they're going to have to do them in steps. We are familiar with Phil Hayes and the Arnold Group as well. I have asked if he would come down from Wichita. He's going to come down on May 8th just to visit with, to show us what they have to offer. But we're not entering into anything. We just want to see. But I can't tell you, I've been here since 2005 and I've slept since then. And I cannot tell you about, I think we did one compensation study. Please don't quote me on that. But it is important to keep up with compensation trends. There are so many things that could go wrong if you're not careful in the way that you implement it. There is a real science to it. You can cause all kinds of compression and disillusionment with the employer if you're not careful. So, I will continue to go on, but I think, I don't know if Randy has anything to add, but I think it's time to look at something.
So, as we get more information about this in the process, we'll be bringing that to you and probably asking for support for that, so.
Well, we've never done a study like that ever. I can never remember.
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm like trying to think back and.
I've been here since 2/8. I've never heard.
Yeah.
You know, our employees are very important for people who are in the city because without them, you wouldn't get nothing done.
They're our most important asset in our organization.
Yeah, I think we need to look into that. Maybe I and that all group to do a study on our people.
So, we'll get some more information on that in some, you know, next several weeks. So, we'll bring that to you guys once we know more.
Winfield's a little different from us. It's like the utilities, stuff like that.
Yeah, that's why you can't just take another city's pace because we have unique positions. So, we need to, we need to look at it in that respect.
We've lived along doing it internally. And let me tell you, trying to compare apples to apples with all the different municipalities, it's so difficult because one job title may not mean anything on the job title you're looking at. And one thing that I have a good working relationship with Jamie Chisholm, who's the HR Director in Winfield. And one of the things they love about this product, I guess I would say product that the Arnold Group provided to them is that it has the ability to be manipulated. Like you could put in different data on positions and rates of pay and it will give you more information for your budget. So, thank you for your time. Those are the three items I wanted to discuss.
The PRN designation, are those people, if they decide they want to go full-time, are they eligible to do that if a position opens up?
We would love for them to go full-time.
Are they mostly retired people?
Actually, not. They're mostly, not John Mers at the police department. But they're mostly Winfield firefighter medics and EMTs that have come to kind of help us out in our transitional period that we've been in. And they, we, it would be great to come to a point in time when we don't need to have such a list of PRN, but right now we do need their help.
Does John do something like during our call, when you need more police presence? Is that, he shows up for something like that or talk a lot?
Yes, yes. There are all kinds of activities. Chief Holloway might speak to some of the activities that, and we're looking for more.
As are indicated for a part-time, which they're changing the title of, you're allowed to work up to 1,000 hours per year. And that keeps John under his retirement level. But he has a full-time job at the school now. And so mainly he'll have on a Saturday and Sunday. And we're hoping during the summer, when we have vacations and things, he'll be off from the school and that's where he's going to come in and help us with some shifts.
With one of those, you're not making, you're not making someone else work overtime. You're just paying the OT, you're just paying. So, it's a great thing.
He's a great asset. He retired as a lieutenant, so he knows our department well and he can come right in and we don't have to watch over him.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move we adopt the budget plan, pay plan to become effective April 20th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved second. Any other discussion on it?
No.
If not, it's roll call vote.
Commissioner Beeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three.
An ordinance establishing a downtown common consumption area within the corporate city limits of our Kansas City, Kansas and authorizing the perception and compensation of alcohol or cereal beverage within its boundaries during certain prescribed hours.
I know Tiffany's spent a long time on this thing.
She's an expert in this stuff.
It's kind of fun. Larry was a huge help in this. And so, basically what we came up with, looking at other cities that have already established this and kind of implementing some of our own rules. Going through state statute, I learned a lot. It's not all clearly posted. You have to dig. And so I made everything very transparent in the ordinance with Larry's help here. And that it even speaks to what application you need to apply. So, we will do as a city, a hundred-dollar, one-time annual, every year, we'll apply. Show them our ordinance at the state, send them a hundred dollars in our consumption area map, and then. our ordinance at the state, send them $100 in our consumption area map, and then any participants that want to participate as a business, they have to have an active liquor license already from the state, so whether that's a Class A, Class B, they can have a temporary license and apply. The other key is they have to be within that cereal malt beverage boundary that we set in our map or adjacent to in order to participate. Some other things that we put in there are wristbands. We're going to give that a try. These are just things that we've added that aren't necessarily per state statute. We believe that wristbands would help identify who are people are that are taking and drinking down town because they do have to stay within the boundaries if they are going to walk around with alcohol.
Will the markets be responsible for those?
They are responsible for serving. The city is liable for those who walk outside that boundary.
I mean, the wristbands, will they have to provide them themselves?
So the thought process in that is that they would show their ID one time during that day that they're having an event or we're having that common consumption going on, be issued the wristband with a date on it, and that would allow them to walk around for the remainder of that day. The cups, we've said no red solo-type cups because those are easier to be brought in. And that's another rule. That's actually part of state statutes, you can't bring outside alcohol in. It has to be bought and served there within those boundaries.
Does a cup have the business name on it or anything?
Yeah, it does have to have. So if they're poured or served from a restaurant or a bar downtown, for example, it does have to have some type of logo identifying where that came from as they walk about, and they can't go into the next and just get a refill. So it will need to be visible some parts, and no glass, and that's state statute. And so there isn't requirements, whether it needs to be a sticker. They said no removable koozies, so I didn't go into stipulations on that. So I would say if they want, if the liquor stores or the businesses want to print cups that have their logo, they're welcome to. If they want to put stickers on it, they're welcome to. I've seen, we've seen articles shared from other departments that even in cities that show like receipts, you know, when you go to a coffee shop or somewhere, they print the receipt, and it's a sticker that goes on there. So things like that would work, anything that identifies where they got that alcohol from. Does anyone have any questions?
Rhonda, have you got any questions? Have you seen the statute?
I'm fine. She has just really, you know, done a great job, and I appreciate all of her time.
Well, you know, to me, it's a working, it's a working statute. I think as we work into this thing, there are probably some changes down the road that we may want to look at, you know, brought to our attention again. I mean, it's a start, you know?
I do like.
I know that in South Central Kansas touring region, they talked at the fair, they'd gone to this type of thing, and they use the see-through cups that are plastic like that so you can see what beverage is in there, and they've had good luck with that. In Hutch, their alcohol problem went down, their sales went up, the problems went down, and they've had good luck with it. But they did mention they use the see-through cups, so it was obvious to see what people were drinking, and I don't know if you want to consider that. And then they could put labels or whatever. They did mention that. We had a presentation by the State Fair Committee.
I have a question, Tiffany. So the Legion is outside the boundaries, but it's adjacent.
Right.
So they can purchase it there, and then they have to go back into the boundary?
So they're.
I mean, I know they can drink it in there because.
They're a special club. So they're working with the state, they're working with Greg at the state right now, who's our rep, to figure out what type of licensing would allow them to participate because they're members of them, and it makes them different. It's hard for them to set up, and I didn't talk about, in the ordinance, it talks about it in state statute, there is a non-contiguous boundary area that you can put one tent within the common consumption area, and whenever the applicants apply, so the business applies to the state, they need to decide where they're going to put that every time.
Okay.
And if they move it, they need to reapply. But for his case, he could not put up a tent downtown and serve because how do you say, well, my tent's members only? I mean, I guess you could, but state's.
Sure.
Right now.
Do you know how Shay's doing with his investigation with the state?
I'm sorry?
Do you know how Shay's doing with his investigation?
I have not heard that.
Okay.
I know they're trying to work that out, and maybe the state's still working. New things come up. They just released where we didn't have to permanently block the area, we can open it to traffic. When they first started this a few years ago, cities had to completely block down the whole area. And so maybe changes will come out of this, I don't know. But I think, I think they'll get it worked out where he can get the right license because the first step for a participant to be in our licensed common consumption areas, they also have to apply to the state. Now, that is a free application to the state, but they want to know where in this map you're putting your tent, if you are, and where your license permit is, and they'll decide based on what license you currently carry if you'll be able to participate.
You said right now wine is not considered a drink that's allowed, is that right? Because we're considering a wine crawl is the reason I am.
So the wine crawl is.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Except to get with you.
Wine should be included, wine's included in this.
Because that's what we're hoping to do at wine crawl.
Yeah, wine's.
Waiting on this.
Wine would be included in this.
It's considered for a wine crawl, it's when a place is downtown, some street, it's different, which is what I've seen when I've been over, sees I do it, is they completely block. So that's a special event, totally different.
Okay.
We could still allow common consumption through that maybe if I partner with the state and see how we go about that.
We'll just get with you if we decide to do it and make sure we're doing it right. It is something, we've been to Warsaw a couple of times checking it out, and we'd really like to try and do something like that, but I wouldn't know.
It does.
Yeah.
To do something like that. The other thing, so sampling's different. Samples, I have a question, you know, if I have a business downtown, can I serve samples? Well, you can, but you need to be getting that temporary alcohol liquor license too. And they only, if you're doing a temporary downtown, it's four times a year that they will issue those.
Yeah, we, our wine uses those, we get those wine tastings.
Restaurants and wineries are different if you're serving a business. Now, if you were like a clothing store downtown that wants to do it, then that would constitute that temporary permit in order to do this. Or hire a license keyer to do it.
We, as a winery, we could go in business and do wine tastings for the business, you know?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we make an ordinance establishing a downtown common consumption area within the corporate limits of the city of Arkansas City, Kansas, and authorizing the possession and consumption of alcohol, liquor, or cereal malt beverage within its boundaries during certain prescribed hours.
Second. Case moved to second. Any more discussion on it?
I want to say, like you mentioned before, this is a work in progress and trying to keep going.
And I'm sure that.
Bigger and better, or lesser and better, whichever way works.
I'm sure as we go, there will probably be some minor changes, you know, but at least we got the thing going, and we'll just, you know, see how it works. Okay, that being said, it's roll call vote.
Commissioner Beeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoneman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
So I would like to add, just after you said that, the changes, so from here, here's my next step. I get to apply, and I call the state, I can apply online. So I can submit my map or approved ordinance once I get it signed off on, and our application and pay the $100 online, and then I'll get back with me once that's approved. Once we have our boundary approved, then the folks downtown can start applying.
So how long would that?
I think they have seven days on there. I'm not sure, I'll have to look at that. But if it's electronic, it's going to be a lot quicker than if I do snail mail.
So you're electronically?
And I want to be ornual, like trying to stay easier.
So you'll be done tomorrow, maybe? Okay. Because I know they're in a big hurry back.
The business owners have to do that too, right? They have to apply for a permit?
Yes.
How long does it take?
I believe theirs is one time. I need to find out from the state how that works on their part. As long as we get approved every year for our.
Right.
There should still be.
Unless they change location, right?
Unless they change their location.
Do you have an estimated time for them to get back their approval?
They can apply electronically as well. The state has a really good ABC license renewal section right in there. I'm willing to help them. Josh upstairs is two. And so we can draw where they want to put their tent and things like that. We plan on updating our website to reflect our map and where stations are and things like that. I really liked how the city pays, did their sites, something similar to that. The other piece, you can apply, but we've got to get our signs painted. So that's our other piece that we need to work on as a city.
Tiffany, Rhonda had a question.
So like, I mean, I just feel like the Burford and the two bars that are in the downtown area, our first Thursday is May 3rd or 4th, I believe. So will that, will they be allowed to serve the alcohol then, or is that, we need to wait until, like you said, this, all this paperwork's there, or the pay needs there?
We definitely need to make sure our boundaries are set before the law. So I would say we need to have our signs up. So I need to get with our student department staff and see where they're at. Whoever makes the signs, they're really busy. So we've had those conversations, it's just once we get to that point, once I get that permit back from the state, we're working ahead. I can't say yes. Definitely, well, it's a good start. It's a very impressive opportunity, and I appreciate all your time and all you all there.
Well, Tiffany did all the work.
Oh, Larry helped me.
Well, Larry too, but.
He did though.
She did a lot of homework, you know?
Thank you for what she does. Those bars she was handling. It's a great ordinance, and a lot of times law is, it's great, she did a great job. She put detail in. I'd encourage everybody that wants to be a part of it to read the ordinance. I know being law can be boring, but really, you'll see in there what you need to do, several things, what you need to do. Even the form number that you need will be in there. And then any questions from that, you know, Tiffany'd be happy to answer. She's an expert now.
In response to Rhonda's question, the Burford wants to sell Freddie's Place, the jam bar, they can still sell without this, but you just can't leave the building.
They wouldn't be able to let folks out. And so the other piece of that is the cups, whether it's a sticker or something, and then the bracelets, signs, all those things have to be in place, but we might be able to cut them. I'll let you know. All right. Thank you. I know that's a real. Probably for statements.
Okay, let's get back to item number four, that's what we added.
So a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve a bid submitted by New Windows for America to install vinyl siding, new gathering windows, build new wood steps, ramped, and door at 1114 West Kansas Avenue for an amount not to exceed $27,400.
So this is part of the CBG housing renovation grant that we received. So this is an actual city dollars, it's the grant dollars that the city received. So we also get there's a spreadsheet that came along that kind of tells you all they're going to be doing, but we had, it was like four bids, and they all, they all came in higher than the $25,000 that we are allowed to spend on these homes. And so they're going to use weatherization funds to make up the difference on this program. So that's kind of where the extra dollars are coming from. And 20, they also can add another $2,500 for the lead abatement process that needs to happen as well for the lead paint and things of that nature. So that's where the money's coming from. This will be the last house that we can do with this particular grant, so once this is done, we'll close it out, and then we'll hopefully apply for another grant in another target area within the community in the near future.
So if we approve this $27,400, they'll come up for that? It's a little short right now, right?
Yeah, that covers the CBDG portion of the $25,000 plus the lead abatement money.
Okay.
And then the other $3,500 for the total bid will come from weatherization. That's a different pot of money, and you guys won't need to worry about that, it's all done through SCAD. And once this is spent, can we reapply for more CBD? Yeah, we'll go ahead and close this, this particular grant out once this project's done, and then we can move on to our next target area.
Who decides the next target area?
Well, SCAD, our grant administrator helped us with that. So when we applied for this particular grant, we went through the community with SCAD, the grant administrator, and we looked at all the different types of houses, conditions and size. Again, $25,000 doesn't go very far. So we wanted, we didn't want to go into some of the neighborhoods where there was, you know, a bunch of big two-story homes that $25,000 wouldn't catch, or if there was a bunch of them with foundation issues or things of that nature. So if I recall, we have, I think, eight or nine different target areas within the community, and we kind of rated them based on the type of house and how this grant would potentially benefit. And so we would probably move to the next target area that we identified as being like the second best, but we'll have to reevaluate because it's been several years now since we did the first evaluation, so we'll need to evaluate that. But the size of the target area makes a difference too. I think this time we went too small because we didn't get enough applicants. We weren't able to spend the full $300,000, so we're at that point now, we went out and begged and pleaded for people to apply, and we got, I think, all we're going to get out of that area. So we'll close this grant out and then go to the next area. And again, that's something we'll probably want to look at is the size of it. You don't want to go too big, but you don't want to go so small you don't have enough applicants either, so.
So do we decide that area, or do they come out and look at our area?
They help us decide that, yeah. The folks that are used to administering these grants and really kind of know where the success can happen, they'll help us with that, so. Did we have four bids? I believe there was four bids, and Windows for America was the least expensive? Yes. And again, these are very specialized type jobs, so there's only a handful of contractors that understand how to do these things and meet the requirements because you've got to have all kinds of different certifications, and not every contractor has. Prior to the, when we, after we were awarded the grant, Mike did have, Mike Bell said have a meeting with the different contractors to encourage them to, of local contractors to get the certifications and things they need to do, these, you know, are specialized.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve a bid submitted by New Windows for America to install vinyl siding, new gathering, new windows, build new wood steps, ramp, handrails, and secure electrical up 1114 West Kansas Avenue for a amount not to exceed $27,400.
Second.
Case moved to second. Any more discussion on it before we take a vote? If not, it's a voice vote. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Police Department.
So item number one is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase thirty-six Glock handguns from Kessler. Police supply of Wichita, Kansas, for a quoted purchase price including trade-in value of $12,901.92.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your time, and first a shout out to Tiffany again for helping write up these agenda items. I submitted something to her, and she rewrote it so y'all could understand it. In 2019, we purchased handguns for the department, and Glock recommends either updating or completely rebuilding your handguns within five years, or at five-year mark, so that's where we're at. They submitted a bid to replace the parts, to make sure we don't have malfunctions and that they're operating properly, and that bid came in at $182 per handgun just for the parts. That's not installing them or having our armor work on them, which would take a significant amount of time. So we got a bid back last year in December, they submitted a bid to replace those, and our bid was. and our bid was expired. So last week when we were working on this, uh, I contacted them and they, uh, agreed to honor our bid for another thirty days. So that's, uh, we're replacing, uh, a total of thirty-six Glock forty-five nine millimeter handguns. Uh, we were budgeted for eleven thousand four hundred fifty-five, which was a good budget for this year. Our cost came in at twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-one ninety-two, but we're trading in our handguns, which brings down the cost to twelve thousand nine hundred and one dollars and ninety-two cents. And, uh, I pointed it out to Jennifer in finance that part of that, you say, well, you don't have that many officers, why do you have that many guns? Part of it is always have a spare in case someone's breaks down. Uh, part of it is if an officer, uh, hopefully it doesn't ever happen, but involved in a shooting, we have to take that gun as evidence and reissue them a new handgun.
Do you put the extra, the extra ones in the safe? You got a safe?
Yes, we have a large safe in the captain's office that they're kept. And we purchase two handguns for the fire department, for the fire, fire marshals, and we supply them with duty ammo and with ammo to practice with when they come out to the range and qualify with us. So that's part of the, and for that, and that's why we.
I mean, how many, how much ammunition do you use a year in a pistol? I mean, on, to your shooting, I mean, your practicing, stuff like that.
I'm sorry.
How mu- how much ammunition through a pistol do you?
Should have brought a range master with me to answer that exactly, but, uh, uh, just a qualification for C post, for an officer to stay qualified, it's a fifty-round course.
Okay.
But we work up a lot of practice of that before we actually take that and we go out multiple times a year.
And where, where's your, where you shoot at up there?
We share the range. It's at the landfill, Cali County landfill. It's on the north side of the property.
Okay.
We share that with, uh, the sheriff's department, with Winfield P D, with, uh, Colonel Justice at Cali and, uh, the Department of Corrections.
Mr. Mayor, I made that we authorize the city of Arkansas City to purchase thirty-six Glock handguns from Kessler Police Supply in Wichita, Kansas for a quote purchase price including trade-in value of twelve thousand nine hundred and one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
Case been moved to second. Any more discussion on it? Not hearing none. Uh, it's a voice vote. All, so, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Did your city manager updates?
Hey, so I left up there for you guys to take a look at, uh, thank you note from the Habitat for Humanity and the McMadness Cookoff, the Mac and Cheese Cookoff. They were, uh, raising dollars for some downtown, I believe, so they're free to take a look at. There is a flyer on your table to, uh, remind you of Mike Frinch's retirement luncheon tomorrow. Uh, it'll be from eleven thirty to one thirty. It's a kind of a come and go. So if you have time and want to, want to wish Mike a, uh, great retirement, uh, that's going to be going on. Also outstanding student awards banquet is April twenty-second at six-thirty in the right room. And I left a flyer over there with you guys as, as well to remind you about that. Taco Wall is, uh, May fourth. So that's kind of, um, I didn't want to mention that Commissioner Snowver, Stover and I attended the, uh, the League of Municipalities City Leaders Academy this weekend and, um, I did send you all, um, copies of some of the PowerPoints that, that we saw there. And some of the things that were covered, um, was the, the city staff and elected officials ha- ha- how to best work together. Obviously home rules are a big thing and they, they shared, uh, information on home rule, Kansas Open Meetings, um, but things on budgeting and finance. And, uh, and then we got a good chance to network with other city officials. So that's always a good time. So I, I think we, uh, took something away from it, I hope.
Oh, it was very good. I appreciate the city allowing me go. But, uh, what I found interesting was it doesn't matter the size of the community or city or whatever, everybody has the same problem. They're talking streets, they're talking water, infrastructure, everybody's talking that, so. Pretty interesting, so.
And I also left a, um, a sheet for, updated sheet on P E C, some of the projects are working on, uh, with this, kind of where we're at on that. And then also there is a updated sheet, um, that Nick put together on the kind of internal projects that we have going on. They want to point out the hike bike trail phase two got pushed back October now, so,
While you're doing that, while you're talking about the one that got pushed back, I went by and looked at the job that you did on the, it's not, I know it's not the high bike trail, but the, uh, on Fifth Street.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of the, the central.
Yes.
Central trail.
And I, I know the, I know the street department stuff was a little frustrated with, with, originally how it came, it turned out, but after doing the backfill, uh, I went down and took some pictures and, and looked at it the other day and they did a great job, especially considering that was a, a training issue. And, um, they learned how to do it. They did ongoing job training and I'll let you give this part, how, what kind of savings do we have on that?
There was significant savings. So we, we worked with a fifty thousand dollar grant, um, and the original estimated, um, cost for that project engineer estimate, if we had went through the normal process of hiring out and doing all the inspections and engineering and stuff, it would have been closer to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so.
And we got it for.
Well, it'll, it's going to come under fifty thousand.
Yeah.
We using our, our guys' labor and materials and, and then that piece of equipment, so.
We need to look at the, maybe this year's budget, buying that piece of equipment because it's worth about ten thousand dollars. It's not very expensive.
Well, and then they, they also have since gone from the, from, um, the pool up into Fifth Street and.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, Brian, you can, you, you can admit save yourself. It, it's night and day, the, the difference on, on the concrete pour.
Yeah. There's things that, you know, the, the concrete slump and things like that make a big difference.
Sure.
You know, it's training, the, the guys bringing the concrete and what they need to, um.
Makes us a concrete mountain and each trucks, each of the trucks different. So there was a lot that we learned.
And like I said, he, they weren't real happy. I mean, they, they would have liked to dump, but considering, I thought it looked like a great job and then watching the second run and they went uphill on that one and it was excellent. It, I think it looks, it, it looks great. So hats off.
Well, most of the grape I heard was, are you going to fill it in on the size? I said, yes, you know? It don't look good right there. I said, we'll get it, we know, we'll get to it, you know, so.
I did a great job there.
Randy on Streets and Transportation is just meeting on the twenty-first of May with P E C on the Compass Point area. Infrastructure planning.
Um, no, that is not, it's, um, right here, let me just go. You got it?
No, that was, yeah, that's right, right above that, what I'm asking about.
Okay. Uh, is it on this P E C sheet here?
Uh huh, yeah. It's the first one under Streets and Transportation.
No, it wouldn't be. It, it's going to be, um, because, uh, that, that's a separate, uh, separate project. That's going to be more about, uh, uh, I believe, so we're looking at doing, um, a street assessment. It probably has something to do with that, um, some of the, uh, some of the grants that are out, these are out there and such a thing, so, yeah.
Well, they were going to come in and think it says, what were, to help us determine what streets we need to do, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and so we, we had a, we're going to have a presentation from them here, probably the next work session for you guys.
Yeah.
Um, they've provided a proposal and, and they'll come in, they, they use a camera called, almost like what Google Earth uses. They go around taking pictures. Well, this, this takes pictures of the streets, um, and they'll do every street in town. And then they use, uh, AI to take those, uh, pictures and develop a, a really comprehensive, um, look at our, all our streets, the conditions, the material they're made out of. And then it, it helps us determine, um, a condition and, and what needs to, what need, what's a party needs to be taken care of first and second, third. It'll, it's, it'll have a color-coded map. It'll help us do our budgeting, our capital improvement, grant writing, all this stuff.
I'm not sure that, humping around my motorcycle, I might have a better idea on where I'm staying.
That's true. There's, um, Garden, Garden City, Kansas is, is using this and I visited with their public works director, uh, this, uh, past week and they love it. He said it, it's been a game changer for him on the street maintenance. It helps them put the, obviously we don't have unlimited dollars that we have. Matter of fact, streets are at least funded probably department in the whole city. And so it's very important that we spend those dollars in the right place when we, when we do. And, you know, we'll, a lot of times we'll go after a grant and that's where we put our extra money is, is to complement a grant, but maybe the, maybe that area that we got the grant for isn't the most important, uh, part or street that we need to be working on right now. So that'll help us determine those things, yes.
Maybe, maybe what I asked on the back of that, there's residential development projects?
Yes.
Is, is that, is that Compass Point and what's taking place?
I, I got an update on that coming up.
Okay.
A little bit separate from that, so. So I'll, I'll just jump right into that then. So Josh and I met with them, uh, on the tenth and, um, so really they, they've been doing a lot of preliminary work out. They've, uh, they've been doing, kind of putting together base maps of the, um, the structure, the, um, ge- geographical makeup of the property and that type of thing. Uh, they've been, um, studying our, um, our regulations on zoning.
Right.
Getting all that stuff together. So they, they have a really good understanding of that. And so the, the next things they'll be doing is putting together some preliminary concepts, uh, based on, on all that. They're looking, well, they look at the housing studies, planning and zoning, uh, and the infrastructures out there, uh, things of that nature. So they'll start working on preliminary, um, concepts, um, and then they'll bring those back for city staff to review. They'll get the plant, to the planning commission with those and tweak those and they'll have a public event. They have the, if we stay on the calendar, um, on the sixteenth, they have the final kind of, um, plan to present to the city commission for their, for the approval. And at some point, you guys will, we'll get the preliminary stuff in front of you guys as well. So you're not going to have to wait till the last second and see what's, but we'll have you in that as well. So yeah, that's kind of where they've been going. It's, right now they're just doing a lot of preliminary work, going to get in all their ducks in a row with them. So they have all the information and, you know, and understand that they will put in the paper and what looks like. Um, we also met with Creekstone last way, last week, this kind of just starting to water rates. So, um, I have a meeting with Carl Brown, the consultant that we used to help with that on Thursday. We'll get him into town here as soon as we can and he'll help, he'll meet with us in Creekstone and kind of keep working on, on what that looks like. Out of the, out of that meeting with Creekstone, um, they really did express the desire to have their logo on the water tower, um, in golf, uh, industrial park. So, um, we are working on doing a change order and kind of working that out to where they can have the appropriate logo on that water tower as well, so.
They're saying on their customer, when they first come in, they see that water tower, you know, they, they, might help them, you know, logo and it's kind of giving them character.
Get a little shift in, in, but it worked out good. We're at the, at the, at the right time to, to work that into the painting, repainting that's one out there. So you'll probably be seeing change order come before you guys here in the future with that, uh, the change of contract we have on that, so.